We're good?
That might be it.
Okay, go.
No, no. We've got to be good.
There we are. Good evening. I would like to call the January 8th, 2013 New Market Planning Board meeting to order. Yeah. Thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. First item on our agenda, certify a quorum with us this evening. We have, let's just go around for the record.
Ed Carmichael.
Elizabeth Dudley.
Janice Rosa.
Valerie Shelton.
Diane Hardy, Town Planner.
Rick McManaman.
Eric Poterman.
And on our first order of business, if anyone would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we just have one item on the agenda. This is a special meeting that we call in order to hopefully finish up and move forward the proposed amendment to the land use code regulations and the zoning ordinance, as well as our site plan review regulations. Well, those we'll deal with here locally. So tonight is a public hearing to amend Title III of the Land Use Code and Regulations, Chapter IV of the zoning ordinance, and Chapter VI of our Site Plan Review Regulations in accordance with RSA 675:2, RSA 675:6, and RSA 657:7. The purpose of these amendments is to expand the mixed-use functions within the downtown village area and reinforce its pedestrian scale and historic character. The full notice has been posted. There are a couple of packets here for the members who are with us in the ordinance, in the audience. And...
On that last one, did you say 657:7?
No, no. Six, seven, five, colon, seven.
You said six fifty-seven.
Okay. So basically, just to summarize where we have continued from the last meeting and why we've reposted this particular meeting for this hearing, is we have removed all of the properties that were located north of the Lamprey River. So the north section of 108 has been removed from the proposed zoning, from the proposed properties that this zoning amendment would affect. And I think that was really the core of the change.
We also took the design standards out of the text of the zoning ordinance and put it into the site review ordinance.
And we already discussed those in the last meeting because we had done that at the prior. We reposted last time for that one. Okay. So I think, Diane, why don't you briefly go over this Route 108 corridor handout relative to the lots that have potential further subdivision that everyone has in front of them?
Certainly.
This one here. And on the back, there's a build-out density that has been modified.
If you recall at the last hearing, we had a similar analysis where we looked at all of the lots within the area proposed for rezoning, and we determined the number of lots which could conceivably be subdivided. And that was simply done by doing a query on my GIS system, saying, you know, single out all the lots that are over an acre, half an acre in size, and have greater than 100 feet of frontage. And those lots, I think there's eight of them, if I'm not mistaken, maybe nine, are identified in red on the map here. Okay?
And then, just a comment. Keep in mind, two of those large, long lots is where the railroad goes through. So even though they have the acreage, I don't think anyone's going to, you know, get rid of the railroad and develop those lots.
Right. The other part of the analysis, there was concerns raised about the number of new units, apartment units, which could be built under the proposed rezoning. And for the last meeting, we did a quick build-out analysis. And if you'll turn the sheet over, I'm going to save some paper here. In our proposed area for rezoning, there's 37 parcels totaling about 21 acres. And of those, we identified the potential number of units that could be developed, and that's by determining six units per, the number of units using the ratio of six units per acre, which is what the density is for residential units in the M2 district. I went through the tax records and identified the existing units and did some quick math to identify the number of new units which could be developed within this area. Now, this assumes a complete, you know, rebuilding of the areas, tearing down unit buildings, and assuming that, you know, lots that are currently commercial would be taken over by apartments, if you will. And we come up with approximately 100 units could conceivably be built out. But that needs, you need to take into consideration that this doesn't take into consideration wetlands, soils that are not suitable for development, or lots that are irregularly shaped that couldn't conceivably be laid out with apartments in the future.
Or, if I can just, or if you take the, if you look at some of the large acreage parcels, like the lots that are within this zone that serve as parking for the mills, they can't all of a sudden redevelop those because most of that land is dedicated for mill parking.
Right.
So those all have to be taken into account. I'm sorry, Elizabeth.
No, well, that was just for me. Is that why we've got 133 instead of 144 in terms of potential units? Did you discount? And you didn't just add them?
Your potential units existing, so potential minus existing becomes new.
But it doesn't, but the math isn't right.
But there's, some of them have more units and there's a negative. They're not supposed to add up.
Well, that's why I was asking. I was curious. I don't understand exactly why they're not adding up because...
Because there's some lots that have more units on them than what is permitted. So the number of new units is actually a negative number.
So if you look at U2, 249, where potential units under the ordinance changed before, coming down, number 30, sorry, number 30 on the list. So, under the zoning, under the proposed zoning change, it could have four units. But there are eight currently there. So they couldn't have any more units. They're already non-conforming even under the...
But so that's counted zero.
Right, instead of negative four.
Right, but I'm just wondering, 97 and 47, to me, I get 144.
They're not supposed to add up.
Well, that's why I'm curious why not.
Because this negative, wherever there was a negative, okay, I did the formulas. Wherever there was a negative, instead of putting it down as a negative figure, it's put down as a zero. Okay? Does that make sense?
So a zero is really minus four.
But it's not.
If you did it purely mathematically, right.
You can't, you can't tell the person he has to get rid of four of his units.
Right.
Okay. Does that make sense?
So that's why they don't add up.
In that one, that would be minus four, in that particular...
I don't understand why that would be minus four and not just neutral zero. They're not going to take any down.
It is zero.
It is zero.
That's why they don't add up.
And that's why they don't add up, Elizabeth.
That's why they don't add up, right.
Well, I'm not adding up the whole column. I'm not saying that 97, 97, zero is zero. So zero's not added to 97, correct?
That column adds up to 97.
Right. But why doesn't 97 and 47 add up?
Because they're...
Because there's negative figures in that column, and I zeroed them out. If you have...
If you put the negatives in, she's saying it would have added up to 133. If you put the negatives in the new units?
Well, I don't know why, then. It just is a, to me, it's counterintuitive. However you've done it, I trust, you know, you have your own reasons for your method.
It's clear to understand. That particular lot, 30...
I'm just looking at the, I'm just looking at the column headings and trying, you know, existing units, new units, and so, oh, okay, that would be potential units.
No, potential units would be the number of allowed units. And maybe if that makes it more, if that is as allowed, okay? That could be allowed units under the zoning change, if there was nothing on any lots, zero units. The problem is, some units have, some lots have units, which is the existing number of units. So if you take number 30, where it shows that there are, there only four units would be allowed, but there are eight now, they can't add any more units. There's no, there's no more new units that can be built on that lot.
If it was a purely mathematical analysis, that figure would be negative four. And if you then totaled up all the numbers in the new unit column with the negatives, then it would balance out.
Okay, I would, just, for me, it's more, it's more comfortable to see numbers that add up, but...
But they don't add up, Elizabeth. That's the point.
No, that's the point. Exactly. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Let me rephrase this, okay? These columns have nothing to do with each other.
Okay, well, usually, columns do have something to do with each other.
No, they're just simply columns of data.
All right. Yeah, I'm not the only one who'd be confused by reading potential units and expecting, hmm, that equals the sum of existing units and new units. But there are little asterisks that might maybe make things easier, but...
I've got, okay, I've got a kind of a different question, similar. The total acreage of these lots is 20.7.
Mm-hmm.
So if you multiplied that by six, which is the density per acre, you would have 125 or something. So I'm assuming that the potential units, the fact that it's 133 is because of rounding?
Rounding errors.
At what point, I guess for the sake of understanding it, if, once you go over a number, does it round up?
No. So you should all, you should all round down.
If you're allowed 4.2, you would get four.
Right.
If you get to 4.6, are you allowed five?
That should round up.
Why not?
You just, you...
Because in any zoning, you can never round up. If you have, you know, 39,000 square feet and you need 40, you can't get the additional.
Yeah, that's fair, but, okay, so, but that points to a different question, I think, along Elizabeth's lines. Item 21, that's .4 acres.
Mm-hmm.
How do they have 14 potential units?
Maybe it was an error. Six units per acre, so...
Which would be 2.4, so that's a typo.
There might be an error there.
Okay. So that would be .6, that would be 2.4, so that would be two. Okay. I was just trying to understand it, okay.
Yeah.
No, that's...
Let me correct that for the next analysis.
Well, that makes sense to find that error.
So that would drop by the totals?
No, I mean, that's good to correct it.
That would drop it down by 12.
Right.
Let me go through it and check the math before I...
I think you have to go through and check the rounding. Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I understood it.
Then we didn't round up, that we rounded down.
So this is an absolute build-out, which doesn't take into account wetlands and setbacks?
Yeah. This makes, this makes no sense from a reality standpoint.
Right.
This would never give you the reality.
Okay, I mean, but I don't think it's untoward of us to ask for a reality. I mean, I understand, so this is the maximum, but there's some, at some point, we should have a, maybe an understanding of minus 20% or 10% for...
You have to look at each individual lot and do that analysis for each individual lot. And the cost to do that...
Okay.
Analysis would change.
Time and engineering wouldn't make sense.
I mean, it would change, though, because what, you know, somebody, if you did each lot individually, somebody could go out and buy four or five of the lots combined, and that would eliminate, you know, you'd have...
This assumes, because that's what it does. This assumes that you have 37 lots that you can combine altogether, take down all the buildings that are on those lots, and build all apartments.
Well...
Well, as long as they have commercial mixed use with them.
Can I, you said apartments, Diane said apartments a couple of times.
And it's not.
It's not apartments. It's residential units.
Residential units, thank you.
It could be condos, it could be...
Correct.
Triplexes, whatever, duplexes, whatever. Right, okay. I just wanted to be clear on that, that we're not talking specifically apartments. Okay. That's it, I'm all set, then.
All right. So we'll make sure all those numbers are double-checked before it goes to council.
Can I ask a question I guess I should know the answer to? Would it be allowable to build a residential, a single residential house under this new change?
Correct.
It would still remain an option.
Right, that doesn't change.
You don't need any commercial component to anything.
Correct.
No.
Okay. Just checking.
Okay, so, again, we'll just make sure that that, we'll confirm all the accuracy of that data before that goes to forward. So the only reason that we're here tonight is because we've reposted because of the change of taking out north of 108. I said, I'm going to open up to public comments if there's any members of the public that want to speak relative to that change that's been made, or speaking to the ordinance itself, or any of the other proposed changes. Okay? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comments. Any additional comments from the board?
Just a point for the folks to understand, the existing places there are grandfathered to the changes in this law. Is that correct?
That's correct. Any changes to any zoning ordinance does not impact the use of, or the situation relative to setbacks that, of an existing, you know, structure or use. It may make something more conforming, or it may make something less conforming, but it doesn't, it doesn't impact, you know, the grandfathering is there, I'll say. Okay, so, hearing here, no, Ed?
Just, Diane, you said you were going to go over these numbers. When are you going to go over these numbers?
I'm going to go over them mathematically and make sure they're all correct before we present it to the council.
Okay, like sometime this week or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, the...
Would that be, I mean, I'm going to...
Oh, no, as long as it's, I didn't know if you, you're not doing it tonight.
No, no.
No, and this would just be a tool to present to the council if, in fact, the same question comes up, that this was precipitated by a board member. That's where this came from.
Can I just go back and revisit something we talked about often? And just trying to understand why we need to have six on an acre in terms of units?
Where are you?
Just in terms of units, why we have six, you know, whether we want to make sure we don't want to lower that. I mean, do we really need to have six units on an acre?
That's what the current density is for that district, and that's why we selected it.
Yeah, the only thing we had, that we were proposing to change in M2 was the height from a reduction from 50 to 35. And that through a special use permit, that those, those dimensional requirements could be waived.
Right. How do we guarantee the public that? How do we help alleviate the public's concern? Because I've been getting calls, they don't want to drive through the center of New Market and see more apartments, because you can't say to the people, it can't be apartments, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, that's what their concern is with the tax revenue, tax problems in town, this new school, or if they tuition out or build a new school, whatever they do, they're concerned about that. They're concerned about the infrastructure that we don't have in place to support, maybe if a business comes through. And the biggest concern is, they don't want to see some of these, which, which we have no, nothing in place, some of these older fine homes torn down to become maybe, you know, a joint commercial residential. They're concerned about the face of New Market. They don't want to see the old-time feel disappear. So how do we, and I understand where they're coming from, because if you, I drive, I've been driving up and down the street a lot, and I'm looking at some of the old houses, I'm going, well, those two homes could go. People could buy those lots, put them together, and you're losing a feel of the community. And they're concerned about losing that feel. So how do we guarantee that we're not going to lose the feel of the town and have, drive through an area that's going to be all commercially built up?
Well, I think, as it stands now, someone can do exactly what has been going on because it was B1, or is B1, where the funeral parlor is, or McDonald's, or the Irving Station, or those areas, where fairly large homes were torn down for commercial development. So that's what can happen now. I think converting these areas to M2 provides a greater opportunity for that not to happen, for something more like the Great Bay Dental to happen, where you have an existing residential structure that is converted into mixed use. Because your other alternative, if it's just B1, is to tear it down and put up commercial. If it's mixed use, you do have, Skip Mansell spoke to this, you have the ability to do, to renovate that building and to make it a mixed into commercial and residential. But if your only option is to tear it down and put up a, you know, another fast food store chain or something, that's, that's the option. Does that, I don't know if that addresses the concern as far as from aesthetics.
Yeah, this makes it no, this makes it no easier to, for anybody to come in and develop something like that. It just changes, it changes the ground rules a little bit. Somebody, like, like Val said, somebody could go out there tomorrow and come in with a, you know, come in, buy three lots, tear down three houses, and put a strip mall in.
Right.
In response to your question, Janice, there's really two methods to prevent the demolition of buildings. And this isn't a popular subject, but historic district zoning achieves that. And there's also a ordinance called demolition ordinances that some communities have done, have used as a mechanism, not necessarily to prevent historic houses from being torn down, but at least to provide the... We don't have that. I know, and that's... And I know, several years ago, I brought that to try to do, and everybody kind of pooh-poohed the idea. It's not a popular subject, but those are really the two only mechanisms to prevent historic homes from being demolished.
But this at least provides a landowner flexibility, or even a developer who wants to come in and buy land along 108 or Elm Street. So they don't have to do that. They don't have to tear it down. There's an option, there's something that's more flexible that allows them to still have, you know, I think, the highest and best use for that property. And then, let me just speak, because I'll speak, I'll definitely speak to this, to the council, you know, if this moves forward and we present it. The, we understand from the, from the, you know, the demographics and the future land use, you know, planning, that we will have a population growth in New Market. The other basis for this is, with this mixed-use concept, is where do we want the population to grow? Do we want more single-family residential neighborhoods growing on the outskirts of town that, we truly understand, cost the town money? If you do the analysis and you think about, you know, where families will relocate, or where they want to locate, particularly if you have multiple children, there, and where new development can occur, it's going to be on the outskirts of town. The whole trend seems to be that, can you bring population more in town so that perhaps the older residents of the town, maybe they want to have just one car, or they want to walk to where they can buy things. And so they can kind of move in closer to town, or in the urban center, and then their property, you know, goes to, say, goes up for sale, and a family can move in, as opposed to continuing to expand our housing inventory so that it's all, you know, single-family homes, that potentially could cost the town money. And that's the whole idea, too, is, you know, not lose sight of the fact that, you know, in this whole special use permit process, anyone who comes before the board really needs to do a feasibility study, because they need to, they need to prove to the board that the, whatever the proposed development is under this special use permit is of a fiscal benefit to the town. So, I mean, that, you know, that's right within the ordinance. And if the, if the planning board's not comfortable that it doesn't meet that, then the development shouldn't be approved.
Is the residential build-out always tied to commercial? Can someone just come in and put, so that someone could just put in a pure six units in without any commercial component?
Correct.
Yep. That's the way it's written.
I don't know if that's something we want to think about. I mean, if that's what you're really trying to promote, mixed use. I mean, that's the single use, that's not mixed use.
It's the biggest reason that when we drew the line where we did on the last go-around for the northern core, is so that you didn't have those large lots that could be appended together, that somebody, that would give somebody the incentive to do just residential.
But maybe.
You have to look at each lot.
I understand, but I'm thinking, it's not really mixed use if someone just goes in and puts in residential apartments, is it?
If someone does, if somebody, you know, has an acre and wants to do six residential units, they need to be in two buildings, because you can't have more than four in each. And what I'm trying to say is, I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing, because if they're in town, you're bringing the growth of the community closer in town.
You are, except, I'm just, you know, we're just discussing ideas here. I mean, but by building out potential space for residential use instead of commercial use, once that's done, that's gone. I mean, there's no longer a option for business development on that lot.
Not necessarily. It could be redeveloped.
That's not true at all.
It could be redeveloped.
Well, you mean, redevelop isn't torn down, and sure, but I mean...
No, it could be rehabbed and converted into commercial.
Yeah, but that seems a roundabout way of building downtown businesses.
But your, your first floor in a downtown Route 108 location is going to be commercial.
Right, but, but you just said that it's not necessarily tied to commercial.
The, some portions are, depending on where the lot location is.
I think I'm...
Because fronting on 108 would have no residential in the first level.
That's, I mean, that is obligatory.
It's one of the requirements.
One of the requirements of the ordinance.
Okay, that's what, that's what I tried to revisit in terms of where that is, and where is that in the...
Let me show you where it is.
That's where we took the downtown overlay district and put it into this ordinance.
That's what I just thought I had asked in my previous question, and I thought that your response suggested that one could just put up residential units. I thought that's what I was asking you, but I guess I didn't phrase it correctly.
Then the answer is more...
They can put up residential, they can put up single-family and duplexes without any special permit.
Section...
Okay, but that's not mixed use, that's...
No, anything above that, you have to have mixed use.
Right.
So somebody just going to come in and put six units on our lot?
It's section 202, M2 district, sub-paragraph...
Okay, I don't have, I just came from work directly.
It's in the package, but then you made it out.
I made a package for everyone.
If somebody wants to do three residential units, you have to have a commercial component.
That's it, right, Elizabeth. Okay, go to page 12.
If someone was, what did you say? I'm sorry.
If somebody wants to do three residential units, they have to have a commercial component.
Okay, three residential units.
It says, paragraph five reads, no residential unit shall be...
I'm sorry, I'm just catching up to two. Okay, paragraph, what page are we?
Section 202.
Yep, which page?
Page two, and page three. If you look at paragraph five...
Okay. No residential units should be located in street-level space if the building has frontage on North Main Street, Main Street, South Main Street, or Exeter Road.
Okay, so you can't have any residential on the lower level, on the first floor level, if it's on North Main Street, Main Street, or South Main, or Exeter Road.
Okay. So, truthfully, most build-outs would have a business in them.
If they're on that, right.
Well, I mean, aren't the lots we're talking about?
If they had three or more residential units.
If they had three...
If somebody wanted to come in and put a duplex in, they don't need to have...
So where is that, three or more, how is it tied to three or more residential units here again?
If you look at the table...
Well, I think we just, we just really need to understand what we're doing.
If you look at the ta, the back of the table, Elizabeth...
Back of the table, okay.
The table, the page after the table.
Table of permitted use?
Yep, item six, the item after the table. The M2 district, a special permit allowing multifamily residential and mixed-use development involving three or greater residential units in section 202, M2. That's, that is saying you need to have a commercial component if you do three units or more.
I guess that's kicking in.
Is everyone all set with this?
Yes.
I just have a question. I don't know, I don't think we addressed it. And I know the town council brought up the issues of, the parking issues in downtown New Market. And they have, they brought up different, maybe a study may be done, they don't know what they're going to be doing, but they have brought up the concern about the, people have been complaining about the parking issues. But if we put in, of course, this is down the other end, but by the time everything's done, I don't think we figured in the parking situation.
Yeah, the project shall have at least two onsite parking spaces for residential.
If they don't have two parking spaces onsite, they can't do it.
If they do any residential component to it. If they're not doing residential component, they're falling under site plan.
Okay, so we're not making an impact to the tra, I know we went through this before, but just seeing that the, I was watching a rerun, and they brought it up, and I'm going, geez, we're just doing all this, do we even consider it? And it's been so long that we've been doing this, that sometimes you forget.
Yep.
We, we are making an impact. Let's be clear about this. Any increase in population has an impact. Any expansion of the tax base is going to be an impact. The question is, do we want to see an expansion of the tax base? And how do we want to see that expand? I mean, that, you know, that's kind of the premise of why we even started going down this road, which came out of chapter six of the master plan.
Yep.
So, I mean, you know, that's, we can continue to do nothing, or we can move forward and try to get some expansion of the tax base in a positive direction, and it's financially, fiscally positive for the town. And we looked at, we started with a very, you know, broad net, and we, through many meetings and many research and analysis, we've now honed in to, do we start it here? Do we, you know, is this the area that is best suited, at this point in time, to do some urban revitalization into more expansion of what is happening downtown?
Can you, can we discuss a little bit, yeah, the premise of necessarily bringing in more tax revenue?
The tax base?
Right.
Sure. Every time you have a redevelopment of a property, you're, I mean, people aren't putting money into a property that's going to make it, make the tax base on it less than what it is. The mill is a perfect example.
Right.
You take, what are we getting, $15,000 a year, and now what is it producing? I mean, that takes it to the extreme. But any redevelopment, you're going to see that. The question is, it has to be shown that it would be a positive impact.
Well, it depends on the value of the building, and it's a question of keeping the buildings higher quality and more in that, because only that is really going to increase the tax base.
But no one buys, spends $200,000 on a property to then reconvert it into $100,000. That just makes no economic sense.
Well, I understand, but if you're bringing in apartments, those are additional costs to the town. So, I mean, it has to be...
No, I disagree with that.
That's new. That's not correct.
Not correct.
I think if you, I think if you looked at the mill project, you would find that the cost to the town for, for what will it be, the tax revenue, when the section 79 is done, that's a huge positive to the town from a tax base.
There are also, I, I understand, but there are also, you know, there are impacts for bringing more people into the town in a situation where they're not necessarily contributing higher taxes. So that's, you know, that's, you have to be realistic about talking about tax revenue in terms of what you're bringing in, and the future expense to the town of the new people.
Which is why, through the special use permit, they need to do a fiscal impact analysis.
To show that it's going to have a positive impact.
For the town.
If it has a negative impact, then the planning board doesn't approve it.
Well, that's, that's, I guess that, so we're showing, I guess, elements of trust in, in here. No?
Did you have Danny Boyes available to the job?
No, well, the fiscal impact statement will be accurate, that's the trust.
Oh, it'll be done by a, it'll be required to be done by, there's, there's a small group of, a small group of professionals who do those, just for towns, just for developments. And I, if, I would surmise that that's what's going to happen, is that somebody would come before the planning board, it's not going to be a letter from the developer that says, there's no fiscal impact to the town. It's going to be an analysis which, which analyzes impacts to water and sewer, town, DPW, police, fire, school is always the biggest one. I mean, they have to show...
Well, that's what the term is.
And the developer pays for that.
Right.
And the planning board, if, if the developer pays for it, and the planning board has the right to have an independent evaluation done of it, if we question whether or not the figures are accurate or realistic. So, I mean, that's part of our process, and that's part of the special use permit process. So we're not just allowing it without any controls. They have to be able to prove that there's not going to be adverse fiscal impact on the town, or else it doesn't get approved.
And the beauty about a special permit is that the planning board can reject a special permit application for virtually any reason. It's not like site plan, where if you meet your requirements, you have to approve it. There's, special permits can be...
Or if you get a variance to something, and then you, you know, then we can't overrule that, because they have a variance to something, whether it's dimensional control or something along those lines.
I think the special permit route gives the town more control over it than, than if you could do it by right.
Right, absolutely.
Can I ask a question? I know you're going to hate, guys are going to get mad at, not mad at me, but my, we can't, I've, I've known, I've went to a meeting where there was a demolition ordinance passed, not passed, but all discussed at a workshop at the, Concord. Very good, and I brought all the information back, and didn't go anywhere, but we are a new board, so it makes a difference. I want to see the tax impact grow in New Market, not the impact, I mean, the revenues from new businesses come in, the tax base increase. I want people who have old homes that they bought be able to renovate them, and if they need to put another unit in, I want that to happen, so that is successful for them. They're in it to make money, you know, too. I want to see that component for that owner, those owners. But on the other hand, I, help me out, I don't want to see the, all the old character of New Market gone, with people coming in, and like you said, they can do that now, is...
The only incentive is to do that now. If it's B1...
Right, but I mean, how can we, I would feel a lot better if we had a mechanism in place to help preserve some of the older buildings, and I know, I know they can't do it, no, I don't know how you can incorporate...
I am.
Let's, let's...
High them? My taxes are high enough, I don't need any more property.
I am in rehab them.
Yeah.
That's a discussion that went on for several years, and I think through several councils. And it was voted to not have an advisory, no, a historic district commission.
That, I, I understand all that.
If, if the current council wants to revisit that, then I think that's a project for the council.
But what I'm saying, you don't have to go put that into place, you could do this demolition ordinance instead.
That's another option.
It's got nothing to do with this ordinance, so.
No.
No, but, but my concerns...
But the city of Concord, for instance, has a demolition ordinance. It doesn't say outright, you can't demolish, but it, it puts, kicks in a timeframe within which the city and its experts can do evaluations to determine whether or not it's cost-effective to rehab the building as opposed to tear it down. And oftentimes, because of that process that the developer has to go through, it may lead to the situation that we saw on 13 Water Street, where the developer decided, gee, I think I do want to rehab this building, because it makes sense, I can get historic preservation tax credits, that sort of thing. And that's a mechanism to help facilitate the rehabilitation of buildings as opposed to the demolition. But, you know, if that's something that the planning board and the council feels is an important mechanism for us to have in our toolkit, if you will, of, of tools to direct growth and manage growth, then that's something we can consider. There is another concept called neighborhood heritage districts, which is an overlay district, which isn't as stringent as a historic district ordinance, but it, you know, provides the planning board the option to review plans, to assure that they're, you know, appropriate for the historic character of the area. Maybe that's an option we might want to consider.
Well, and even part of this ordinance, we've got the flexibility built in to be able to accommodate dimensional controls, so that things are consistent with abutting properties. So we're getting into that whole form base, you know, how does it fit into the neighborhood?
And, you know, from my perspective, not to insult any property owners, but there's not much on the north side of town that if it got tore down, that I would feel bad about. There are some really nice houses there.
No, I'm thinking also about...
Right, right now, we're only dealing with Elm Street and the south end of town.
Oh, right.
Okay. Ed, do you have any other comments or questions?
Okay, so out of the possible 95 units, the new units, we're not going to get 95 units. In reality, you may get 50 units. In reality, because of the, the setbacks and...
It's not a whole lot of room for parking, I think, that's identified early in the process.
I'm saying this because I've had people...
Be a limitation.
With the concerns that they have called me with, you know, that, you know, why is the planning board thinking about adding all these units when we have this, the water situation as it is? We don't know what's going on with the school. So if I can help, we think through the process of, okay, it's not going to be 95 units, it's probably going to be 30?
The job of the planning board...
With all the setbacks and wetlands, right?
The job of the planning board is to plan.
It could be planned, I know.
Okay?
I know.
How do we want New Market to develop? That's the job of the planning board. We've done the master plan. One of the core components was the economic development chapter. We've decided to move forward a portion of the town. We know that there are certainly infill projects that should move forward, and they haven't been able to move forward, because they haven't been able to get through the zoning board on the several, okay?
I've seen those, yep.
All right, so our job is to plan. We need to plan for a growth in population, and we need to plan for a growth in tax base. And that's our job.
Yep.
It's my opinion that this ordinance will do that. And it's something that can be done, and it can be done very quickly. Hopefully, it will get through the council. And that we can start to see some of this more, that we can see a continued increase in the positive direction that New Market is taking, relative to addressing both the commercial and residential growth in, in this community. We just want an award for, for the mills. You know, I mean, we're very...
That's not related to this.
It's very much related to this, because it's taking the same concept and saying, this is a very successful concept, how do we expand it beyond those two buildings?
I understand, conceptually, it's related, but physically, it isn't related, because that, the mill was a unique building, there, you know, so it's, it's not really, in my mind, it's not related.
And the mills, the units were not, so they allowed children...
It's a different...
Say what? What'd you say?
The mills, you know, families aren't moving into the mills, because the size of the apartments are very small. So you don't have the impact on the school system. And I'm just throwing out the things that people have said to me, and, because I was all for this, I, I've worked on it, and these people are throwing all these things at me, and I have to have it worked out in my mind, to be clear, that I'm voting in a good, conscious way for the town, that's all. And it, by talking about it, again, which is a pain in the butt, I know, because I know all the time, Val, Diane, and Justin and I sat in the back rooms, you know, bringing things forward, having workshops, having only two people show up, or six people show up, you know, so, and now they're calling, you know? So, I mean, you know...
Yeah.
Will they call you?
Well, no, I'm not taking any public comments, okay? We're, because I've closed the public comments. We, we need to understand, whenever there's any change that every, that happens, okay, we're always going to have the, the people call, or, and if they call you, my, my approach has always been, if you have a comment, you come to a meeting in public and make the comment. We do not act individually here, we act as a board. We shouldn't even be talking to any constituents about any type of applications before our source.
No, but you can sit, you can listen to them.
But they should come and speak to the board, okay?
I know, I know, and I tell them to do that, or tell them to come to Diane.
Right.
We are talking about significant...
You'll also, you'll also always hear negative comments, because how many people have spent the hundred-plus hours going through all of this? Again and again.
But, but it is, I mean, I, I do have to say, it's, it's not a minor's, you know, proposal to affect this many, you know, this much area.
But it, but it's a very well thought-out, very diligently...
It's not a minor proposal. We don't, it's, you know, it's kind of a game, we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
But that's the way, it's a game.
Well, anyway.
Okay, I only had one more question, Val. And it came from the, someone on the Conservation Committee, who is a town councilor. And it's not really affecting the ordinance, he, his question was, at any time, did this ordinance get passed before the Economic Committee to review?
No, the Economic Committee just had its first meeting.
No, okay, that, he was just asking me, and I'm not on the Economic Committee, so I don't know the answer.
But keep in mind, when we first met, and we were looking at all the areas of town to be developed, we specifically decided to not deal with the large land masses, because that's the area the Economic Development Committee needs to focus on for future land growth planning.
So they will focus on the large masses, okay.
Right.
Okay, because not being on that committee, I don't know what goes on.
Yeah. That committee should not be involved with the small redevelopment parcels, that makes no sense. And especially tying back into chapter six, that would make no sense. Because that committee really should be focused on large undeveloped tracts in like B3, the whole southern gateway, the, what used to be Black Bear. That's, it's, those are strategic areas for, for the town.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I knew the answer before I took a vote.
So, to move this forward to the council, we would need to vote to, we would adopt? Or we would recommend...
You would forward this amendment for adoption by the council.
Make a motion.
I would love you to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the town council, the Annuse Code and Regulations, Chapter Four Zoning Ordinance, and Chapter Six Site Plan Review Regulations.
They, they don't vote on the site plan, they just vote on the zoning.
On the zoning, and the purpose of these amendments is to expand the mixed-use function within the downtown village area, and reinforce its pedestrian scale and historic char, character. And I make a motion, this be presented to the town council for approval.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Ananamous? I think so. Okay, so that moves forward to the town council. Thank you very much.
The other site review, we can approve tonight, or so chooses.
So, does everyone have copies of the proposed amendments to the site plan?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
The proposed amendments to the site plan?
It's included in the package that I gave you.
Okay.
Those are the only questions on it, it's just I'll deal with this time.
All right.
I had to make my, be clear with my mind.
Okay, and I appreciate that. So this is, these are changes to Title III of our Lanus Code Regulations, Chapter Six Site Review Regulations. So we would be amending section three of the design standards by adding a new paragraph titled, "The Design Standards for the M2 District," and will incorporate those standards that are currently contained in 202(c) of the zoning ordinance, with exception pertaining to drive-through facilities. So those now come into site plan, and the same on 302 parking. And that would be changed, the number of spaces is to require two spaces per unit, except one space per unit for elderly housing, or accessory parking for residential uses in the M2 district. So that'd be for an accessory use. So two parking spaces for residential. And those are the two changes.
Did you mention the design standards?
Oh, yeah, so let me take that until it comes. So those design standards, which is...
Who are in the zoning ordinance are now being put into the...
So that's section 3.22, the design standards for the M2 district, these all move into site plan. That gets into the building orientation, outdoor seating, the display of outdoor merchandise, awnings, and then the onsite parking. awnings, and then the onsite parking. Those now, those go into site plan. Okay?
And the drive-through facilities, we were, I've forgotten the context of that.
They're still not allowed, are they?
Wait, oh, here. They are allowed in M2.
Regulations, by cream. There's no restrictions on drive-through facilities.
It couldn't be in the front.
They're in, they'll go, they're on the ordinance end.
What?
Now, that's moved forward. Okay, this is site planned that the Planning Board is going, would adopt. We would want to adopt this before the Town Council would adopt the ordinance, otherwise these would get lost.
We could do that tonight, if we chose.
Yeah, I would like to see this move forward tonight. Is there any, any discussion on the site review regulations changes?
Again, just that we are going to still allow drive-through facilities, correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
Currently, they are prohibited in the M2 District.
But allowed in the B1.
Right, and right now, so what's being proposed is that that restriction be taken off for both the B1 and the M2 District. So they would be allowed in both districts.
So I hear a motion to amend the site review regulations as proposed.
So moved. Second.
Okay, well, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, so the next, next part of this would be, we're going to make sure that the build-out density table is updated, confirmed, cross-checked, and then we'll get this moved forward. That will just be a handout for the council, but we'll get this moved forward. Hopefully, the Town Council will get it, if they can get that on their agenda as soon as possible, we would greatly appreciate it.
I have talked to the town administrator, and it will be on the agenda for the 16th, and we'll try to get a packet of information out tomorrow, so you'll have it.
And your support in helping us will be greatly appreciated, in helping with the, answering the questions, which we know there'll be many. Hopefully, we will have a good package for them, and they will understand where we're coming from with this. The, is there any new business?
I just wanted to ask you a question. In years past, the chairman working with the plan had put together a memo to go to the council, just explaining the premise. Do you want to work together on that tomorrow?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you wanted to do something along those lines. I think that's helpful.
We can't approve the minutes for...
I'd rather do that at our actual, normal meeting, or, yeah, because it wasn't posted on this agenda.
That's the only thing that was posted, right?
Yes, right, just this public...
Okay, so I'll take a motion.
Motion adjourned. Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Sorry.
Thank you.
You took my word.